Okay, it's November 24th at 5:30 PM. I'm opening the Granby Planning Board. Minutes until next. We'll have already correspondence. There's nothing there. So we'll jump right into the A and Rs. First one on the agenda. Burnett Road or Burnett Street? Anybody here from Burnett Street for the A and R? Do you have? So you're here for that one? Do you have the, is this the plans for that one? It is. Yeah, but I want to see what we're getting first. Mark Poppin, explain to us what, what's going on here, please.
So one good department. I'm coming in section.
That's it? So there's no frontage on this?
And their reason, so they're just, they're grading us here.
So what?
It's Steve Murray. It's that street.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. To approve the A and R for Burnett, Burnett Street.
Make a motion to approve these A and Rs presented on Burnett Street.
Second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Function carries. Okay. Next up, Porter Street. Anybody here from Porter? All right.
Do you want to tweet?
Yeah.
Then we can put them over here.
Then we can move this along. This is the one we got to sign anyways. Dakota, there's, are there five copies there with two A and R, or with two?
Mylars.
Mylars? All right, awesome.
Know anything else saying with the check?
Say that again?
Shh, do you imagine? Check which I have and choose my, all the shares I have.
Okay, well, those will be sitting down there and, I mean, they can go downtown actually. They're going to be sitting here, right, Kathy? Downstairs?
Kathy's office is right behind the corner.
All right, so swing in tomorrow or whenever she's in. Ross, the check office, it's 125 per parcel. She has 50 and they'll be here. So what are we looking at here? So you're cutting this piece out? Set it back there for frontage. 125, okay. 2.69 acre. Well, exactly. It says it's not, but it's qualified though. Yes, I was going to say, why don't you wait until you transfer it over? Then you'll have to go at once.
We say why has freedom separate, please? Okay, okay, so it needs to be over the property, okay. Got it. Yep, okay, makes sense.
All right, so entertain a motion.
Well, maybe you have a motion to, the A and R has presented.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
That's the check. We're paying for this.
Great.
Okay.
Is this 250?
Same thing.
Because it's a modification of this one.
It's a modification because now this has to be registered and this has to be registered.
Two different parcels. So it's all.
Cold Hill? Is anybody here for the Cold Hill A and R? It's a no, I guess.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's, let's. Inside of the legs, no.
Yes. And then we're.
Yeah.
On the side, so just one sunblock goes like up here. Let's bring some chilis down further. So Brian come back here slightly over here.
Okay, we're not.
Bird. Yeah. Yeah. Yours. Yeah, you still get weird, you get yours, yeah. Things that you're seeing. Eagles. Ah, yes. No, because, and it's a bullet through the thing. That was one. It was, it was like. Go to the air. That's a smart. Oh, yeah. Just like, I'm sure. Drop. Fuck, and then. There, get on station, stand there. That's nice. It's a bad one. What is this? Right. Yes. Really, I said, yes. Next. Here's a lot of, because it's very. I lost three parts. It's gonna get very. Side out. Cross the room here. For what they want. The truth, well. Yeah. I'll say if there is. I know it works, yeah. She love it. This, you're not on the lines? And also, that's the words to spell. Then, then. And, and. Okay, that was. At some point, the fire is needed. So places are fine. You don't need to use too much on the way. On the way to city. So there's. Then that being a good place. You know. You know. Okay, it takes a few time. Few periods. How long?
Well, that was not here, huh? Where's the application for the other one?
For which one? It didn't come with an application. We didn't see the application.
Which one?
Saying that, that's what I gave the lady when I went to the. Kathy, we gave her the, the actual. Application she threw up. That day.
So you left her with the, the application and the check?
Yeah. Yeah. We're down to the old lady's home. She's not, of course, we're going to see that. Worked on that, she works down.
All right, so then if the check's been received, you're, you can take your mylar and your.
No, I haven't paid yet.
250, 125 per lot, 250 total.
How many grand?
Please. Okay, next on the agenda, site plan approval for the construction. Authority, this is a word correctly. It's not construction. But anyway, so site plan approval. For the construction of outdoor sheds and the, on the property under section 6.3 Site Plan Approval of the Granby Planning, the Granby Zoning Bylaws applicable to Section 4 Overlay District Regulations 4.44, Use Regulations within the Mixed Use Development Overlay District at 185 West State Street and known as Assessor's Map 3-D-1 in the town of Granby, Mass. 185 West State Street, LLC Maryland. IANA Cone Owner Applicant. Okay. So. I'm going to kind of recap on what I know about this before you give us your presentation. So you were before the ZBA and you were declined or denied a permit to operate. And subsequently, it went to court. I don't know if it was land court or superior court. But the, the judge kicked it back to see if the town could settle this without, without getting into any further legal issues. I've talked with town council about this. I actually called me the other day because I think they're on some sort of a deadline too to, to get back to the, to the.
Thank you.
To the courts. So you have representation here? Okay, so why don't, so that's, that's something I'll, I'll turn this over to you and you can.
Don't want to sit, don't want to stand, whatever.
Whatever you feel comfortable. This is, this is.
Probably you're hurt to sit in front of the mic. Just shit. You can be heard.
All right, good. For the record, Tom Reedy, I'm Attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of 185 West State Street. LLC, I think the chairman did a terrific job of giving you a summary of how we got here. I know that Jamie and Marilyn were here maybe a month or so, maybe even more at that point, talking through procedure to figure out what actually is the right next step. I've also, I sent an email to the building commissioner who I think forwarded it to town council. I've had several discussions with town council as it relates to this. And so looking at the zoning bylaw, because it's a mixed use overlay district, there's the availability of, it's section 4.4 Retail Uses Allowed by Site Plan Approval. And so that's why we're here in front of you asking for that site plan approval for the retail sales outdoor of the sheds and the greenhouses and the saunas and the, and the structures. Yeah, the saunas look pretty cool too. Yeah, yeah, if you've driven by, you can see the ones that have the piping coming out. Those are saunas and somewhat popular too. And so, I mean, if, I think, kind of backing up, Marilyn and Jamie acquired this property several years ago and really have invested a lot in it. I mean, they care about it. It's nice to see what they're bringing to town. And they do it in a tasteful way. And I think it's really looking to revitalize that area. They're always thinking of creative ways to draw people in. And I think this is just another one of those. So, I mean, we're happy to, I think you've got the site print in front of you and the application somewhat bare bones because what you see is, is, is what you get. We're happy to answer any questions that you have as it relates to the use, but pretty simple just for retail use at that site. Thanks.
So it's an allowed use. It got rejected from ZBA dividend. The bylaw of displaying wares and goods and it's of my opinion that this wouldn't, this doesn't fall into that category. Storing sheds there for the purchase. For some. They're not being displayed by wayware that's obstructing traffic or any type of eyesore. I think, I think they need to look and, to look to see how many of them are allowed in the site because you have other tenants, you've got parking, you've got other things you want to do there. So I don't know how many you have today or how many you've been averaging. You need to put some sort of a.
Maximum.
Yeah, maximum on it. On it so that you're not, you're not, you're not ending up with parking issues with, with other businesses that are going on, including your own.
Well, if I, if I may, you know, we may want to have that as, instead of a number, right? So saunas, greenhouses, sheds, different sizes, right? So if you say you can have 100 and they're 112 by 20, that's a lot different than 108 by 10s, right? So it might be in a number to not detrimentally impact or impede trapping, traffic or parking circulation, something like that. And then allow the business owners to work within there because they're going to keep those other occupants happy too. So, you know, instead of a set number, it's probably better to think about it that way.
How many are there now?
Seventy.
Yeah, I would say, you know, 75 at times, but the season is getting, you know, slowing down. So we send it out and move the plan, you know.
Has it impacted here at my being lot at all?
None. From where the part parts to where the first sheds are, there was a massive gap there.
Do you have a site planning with you?
It's, board, it's in the packet.
Right here.
So the ones in the front. They're kind of, they're kind of screened, aren't they?
The ones.
The ones in the front right.
Over to the edge, yeah, I think topographically they're screening just from the elevation 202 as it relates to the site.
So that in itself is keeping them from being displayed. Can't see them from the road. What's about this?
Well, I think we have the point, the more sheds that can come from a size of a jewelry box, right? You know, 14, it's 24. Maybe we don't bring it, but just maintain a certain amount of parking. Clear number shed. I don't know that. Other than there, I mean. We dress for 15 to 5 or something. Oh, yeah, dude. I think they have plenty of parking. Parking area and used cars are, there's really not many used cars now.
Not permanent structure, so there's no setback requirements. I don't, I don't have any issues. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak about it? Ken, any?
No, I think the board has identified if there were any sort of concern. I think you've talked through that. I think one of the questions that I had was, you know, not, it not being a non-permission structure and, and Melissa made the point about any sort of, if there needed to be any sort of emergency service. Would there be any sort of electrical or anything like that? No, okay, so.
And our truck has to get in and it's big and he can get around and maneuver easily around all of the sheds.
And the truck is using the gravel parking lot or is it this? Like the way that you have this outlined in the plan, is that the area of which the sheds would be located? Or is that an area where the sheds are located along it, but it's also meant for some like?
This truck and trailer delivers to, like directly into people's backyards.
Yeah.
So he can get through like a nine foot gap. So we can put the sheds close together on our property and still navigate. Is that what you're asking?
I, I was asking, so the presumption is where you have parking on the gravel parking? And if there happens to be someone parked there, the truck driver would not necessarily be using any sort of typical road? He would just try to figure out how to get to that and pick it up?
Yeah.
Okay. What time are, like, what? What is the time of loading and unloading? Is it?
It's really, we, we have no control over him and his delivery fee comes when he has time. We've expressed with him the best days are Monday, Tuesdays. And so our tenants take it all day, month, or weekend, Monday and Tuesday. So most of his deliveries come Mondays and Tuesdays. And then sporadically he'll have to, that's when he delivers to us when he's picking up from our property to deliver to customers that can, that should.
Does it come before seven?
No.
That's what you're getting at, the hours of.
Yeah, it's, it's more so the unloading and loading of the, of the trucks and the ability of the truck to maneuver through what might be parked cars in that gravel parking. Depending, I, I don't know, during a typical business day, it's likely that they. they would be able to maneuver, it's just a matter of, I think, trying to solidify what that might look like on a day where one or two are either unloaded or loaded. So, that's probably one of the, you know, kind of considerations that.
Yeah, I'd have a bigger problem if it wasn't, if it, if there was a tenant doing this versus the owner.
Sure, there's also that.
So, they're, they're responsible for their own operation and putting controls in place to do so. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm fine with the way you're, the way this is, the site plan looks and the way it's being shown. Is there anything that we, we need to have in the?
So, Lord, I would, I would want you to, as we have in the past with regards to criteria under site plan, just ensure, make mention of either agreeing to or however you want to address this, but in the past, in your section 6.3, yes, 6.3, there are eight, 12, 10? And, you know, you've said this in the past, you've, you've, you've made mention of this in, in your past decisions, at least in the past year, you know, considerations if the development shall be integrated into the existing terrain and surrounding landscape, usually you just say, yeah, it does, because that's, and so, the decision will reflect those comments. I just want to, the board to know that the board, that the decision will reflect basically agreement of those criteria. Architecture style shall be compatible with the rural historic character and scale of buildings in the neighborhood and the town through the use of appropriate building materials, screening breaks in roof and wall lines, and other architectural techniques. Is that applicable?
Not applicable. And, and note again that the, the notice speaks to construction, and it's not construction.
Or it's not a story?
I'd like to have that in our decision.
It's
The storage, it's storage of, of sheds, and that.
Well, hopefully, under 4.441A.
Yes, 4.441A is retail use.
Right.
So, really, it's the retail use that's allowed, so that's, it will be the sales of sheds.
Versus construction.
Versus construction.
Six point three.
Versus, I think it's, it's a matter of nuance, so as the obligation, and if the board is in agreement with that, and it sounds like they are, is that retail, the decision will read where your, your public notice reads, that it's a site plan approval for retail sales of outdoor sheds on the property.
Correct.
Right, so we're not going to mention anything about storage or display, it's the sales. Not, yeah, or construction, right. So, that was the architectural characteristics, the third one is, the fourth one is the development shall be served with adequate water supply, that's not applicable. Fifth one, the plan shall maximize the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent ways. Is there any comment that you want to make on that, other than that it's consistent with that?
It's up to them to manage it, too. So, leave that in there.
The development, the site plan shall show adequate measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater, to minimize erosion and sedimentation, and to prevent changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding.
Oh.
The development will not place excessive demands on town services and infrastructure.
And I
Electric telephone, that's not applicable. Exposed storage areas, machinery service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings and structures, and others unsightly uses shall be set back or screened to protect the neighbors from objectionable features.
I think that the site plan shows that.
Okay.
The setback's far enough, and while it's not, it's screened with elevation and vegetation.
Okay, and then, finally, the site plan shall comply with any zoning requirements for parking, loading dimensions, environmental performance standards, and other, and all other provision of this bylaw.
How many parking spaces do you currently have?
We've been over this, okay, so.
I know.
So, if you can't, how are you expecting?
I'll review my laws. I can tell you this, we have never, in the three years we've been there, ever seen crap.
Yes.
Like, there's more than enough. It's true, it's, our tenants are great, because they're not all there at the same time. Like, they normally is there early in the morning, late at night after everybody else is gone, and Kevin doesn't open up until 10:00, closes at 4:00, and Cinderella, she's not even there on Sundays, she's not three days a week, she ain't even there, so. Parking is excessive.
The only reason I was asking was more, more so, I think we really need to just spell out with the, you know, it shouldn't infringe on the current parking.
So, as you have in the past, that could be a condition of approval.
I think that's just my biggest.
Say that again.
As you've in the past, where you've talked about for other permits, or other decisions, where you've talked about projects shall not increase stormwater, right? This could be something similar, where you're saying shall not infringe an existing parking, or has Mr. Reedy said something?
I think that stipulation.
Yeah, number, not, yeah.
Businesses that are there.
And if I could, I guess the only thing, instead of saying existing parking, just understanding the ebbs and flows of kind of the market, right? Instead of saying, okay, you've got this gravel, it has to stay parking, even though it's underutilized, right? It's, it's not necessary. I would just suggest maybe something more along the lines of, you know, whether the structures, the sheds, shall not interfere the location, the siding of the shed shall not interfere with safe and efficient operation of the parking area, like, something like that, so that there's enough wiggle room to let the owners operate. Because they're trying to find the balance, right?
So, don't impede parking for the day-to-day business.
You, you've got it, right? And if they do, they're, they're going to hear about it, so they're not going to back off, but just, okay, there's a corner that's not used, used for used cars, so why not put a shed there? Thanks.
Okay, so what's the timeline for a decision for the, for the courts?
Oh, I think we're, I think we're beyond, it is laying court, by the way. I want to say it was like November 13th, I don't know, so.
October, it was October 20th, not from the
Something, and then there was a, a order, joint status report with 90 days from the day of this order, or by no later than November 13th. I'll check in, I'm not a litigator, admittedly, I'll check in with Mark Tanner.
I'll work there, too.
Was that, oh, we have that one? Oh, did, did they submit something?
Uh, no, this was from Maryland, yeah.
No, the application's the October 13th.
Oh, well, yes, yes, that's what we needed to do, and then the order from the court has something about November 13th as a joint status conference. If you turn it around timely, I'll let my partner, Mark Tanner, know, we'll file something with your town council to the court saying, hey, it's going to be out in the next 30 days, like, something like that. Courts, I mean, you're disposing of this where the court doesn't have to, so they're going to be, sorry, I, I think that's.
So, with that being said, they can do that, because there's no appeal for your hearing, this, this is not a special permit.
It's a site plan.
It's a site plan, so from tonight, it's a decision.
Right.
We, I don't think they'll take it out, but
By Monday, I mean, I probably can turn it around by Wednesday, but obviously, the board needs, or the chair will need to sign it.
That's terrific. All right, so, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the project as presented with the addition of
The siding of shed shall not impede parking of daily businesses?
Perfect.
As you mentioned, Mr. Reedy.
Proceed with efficient use of current. Okay.
So, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Absolutely not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. We're good to go.
Thank you.
Good luck. So, I guess we have a rate, a late arrival here. Renee, our
Hold that. Happy Thanksgiving.
Same here. Thank you. Speedy, watch, explain to us exactly what you're doing.
What's that?
You just what you're doing.
Oh, sure. Okay, come on, please. So, so I'm representing the sellers, Mark and Paul, basically, they already want all this land over here. This property came up for sale earlier in 2025, so they bought it with the intention of, you know, they didn't want anyone building back here, so they wanted to do it for them. There was enough frontage, so we split off, we basically made it like, it's an estate lot, they didn't do any wetland designation, they didn't protest, because again, their intention isn't to build on it at this time, but, you know, I encouraged them to do the access trips, just in case in the future. We are reselling the home, so this is basically just like formally splitting the lot off. So.
They're not selling the lot.
They're not selling, nope, they're done.
So, right now, this is all one lot?
Uh, no, so this was their existing property, their, their house is about four or five houses down, they actually
This has nothing to do with it.
Correct, like, in other words, this came up for sale, and they bought it just to split this back part off.
So, they purchased this.
Correct.
And then we're selling this, right?
They're just going to stop.
Correct, yeah. Yep, yep.
All right, I'm good with that, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
The plan has
We're in, we're in, uh, ring 21, call deal?
Yep.
I will second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Start signing. Is there anybody here for anything else tonight?
Fire farm, it's okay.
Fire farm.
Great. I'm so sorry to be about to leave.
Super son.
It's okay, it's okay. It's a very, it's a very It's a good job, Sarah.
Yes.
Rose has the wire.
There it is, there it is, right? Taking the pen.
Yeah.
It's good.
My first.
What's that?
And we should start a little bit, but thanks, we should.
Good, good.
Sir, thank you so much.
Good to go, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yep, same here.
Thank you. Have a good night. Take care.
Okay, next up, Red Fire Farm.
And I think we're just on the agenda to accept the meeting, but it's a fairly complicated one, while I'm here to ask any questions, and I need that one asked. So, my name is Ray Mann, I'm a principal of Colab Architecture, is the architecture record for this project. I don't know if you had a chance to review the materials at all yet. So, as you probably know, Red Fire Farm, February 24 lost their historic barn on the property at Seven Carver, you know, a big fire, so they've been working to replace that structure. They're looking at doing it at 34 Carver, which has a larger property, about 40 acres of arable land, an APR, and a two-acre exclusion that would allow them to put a, what they want to now do is a farm market, a farm business market, okay, so to actually do a real, you know, retail or, or market operations at that site. So, let's see, part of the reason, so, farm business, I take it is allowed by right in the residential zone we're in, I did go through paperwork with Inspector Quinlan to confirm that this is indeed a farm market, the farm market is a farm business, which is also then allowed by right in this district, but I think it is subject to, so we're, we're not subject to special permit or site plan review, except for having to meet the, you know, general requirements, right? The parking, we need to let you know that we're doing the parking right, doing the signage, those are the primary elements that we think need, are subject to review by the planning board. So, in the meantime, this project required, there's extensive wetlands on the site, so we were, we went through DEP to ascertain that the, that we will be able to, a public water supply at the site, at the site. We got permission from Mass Ag to put the septic field for the market in the APR, that was approved. We've gone through Conservation Commission, who's reviewed our parking, and, you know, various setbacks for both the well and the parking, and that's been approved. Board of Health took us three, four months, but we got the septic system approved, so our understanding was we needed to make sure we have all these approvals. I did go through paperwork with Inspector Quinlan to confirm that this is indeed a farm market. The farm market is a farm business, which is also then allowed by right in this district. But I think it is subject to, so we're not subject to special permit or site plan review, except for having to meet the, you know, general requirements, right? The parking, we need to let you know that we're doing the parking right, doing the signage. Those are the primary elements that we think need, are subject to review by the planning board. So in the meantime, this project required, there's extensive wetlands on the site. So we were, we went through DEP to ascertain that the, that we will be able to, a public water supply at the site. We got permission from Mass Ag to put the septic field for the market in the APR. That was approved. We've gone through Conservation Commission, who's reviewed our parking, and, you know, various setbacks for both the well and the parking, and that's been approved. Board of Health took us three, four months, but we got the septic system approved. So our understanding was we needed to make sure we have all these approvals before coming to the planning board. In the meantime, we were allowed to proceed because it's a farm structure with a shell permit. So that was given to us back in March because, partly because the grants that we had were on a very tight timescale. So we've been proceeding with that. We have the full, Inspector has the full permit set in hand. He's sort of waiting for, I guess, you know, from, for the review by planning, but also, so my ask is to see if we can, he asked us, me to ask you if we are allowed to continue to construction at risk because the approval process is now taken over six months. I think we've been in the process getting these. Any questions? If this is all.
You can go ahead and review the plans with us.
Okay, I have a small set of plans. I don't know. Do you have the larger ones? Johnny, you try and fill the circle.
Great, sufficient?
This. Let's see. Again, I have a reduced set like this that builds.
Yeah, I think I saw that.
And the paper. All sizes. Are you gonna need this? Building? Yes, that's the way to go, right? These are farming exclusion. Yeah. Okay. Two acre exclusion, it's like 40. This is existing farmhouse. It's gonna remain its current. Yep. Unenhanted. Entrance to the building. Entrance is here, relatively close. The old entrance is kind of right here. So we were about 25. Okay, 25. So we have a lot of parking that we're required to use.
Thank you.
So you can see here, there's actually a creek over here. So we had setbacks both for, we're a front area and the buffer zone. So the buffer zone gets closed, but we're in there. So we went through a whole process of conservation to, you know, rainwater filtration. At the edge of that, we're working, we went through approvals to get the well. Well-sided, this is zone, this is our zone one, well protection area.
Yeah, what is that? What's this?
What size is it? It's 145 foot radius. And we have various stipulations, still the DEP outside for us to, can't do in this area. And so here's a septic field over in the APR. So that will be searched in here. And then this, we'd like to do, so with the signage, there's gonna be a signage here. And we'd like to ask for, there's a sign which is at the front of the building. I'll show you in a second. And then we'd like to also see if this person can put signage up here. Because this is kind of a corner street. It's got a very long straight switch going down this way, and then suddenly it turns, and so. So you want to put it on the farmhouse? If possible, so we'd like to have, we do that. Otherwise, it's, because of the way it's kind of creates a visual tunnel, you can't see that sign until suddenly you're turning. And so we felt that it'd be safer if people can be given heads up, sort of as if we're in a stretch. That's something to take a look at. These are all just. So this, that will let you see kind of what the building looks like and what all our various stipulations.
Is it a farm? How else is it able to get in there?
Uh, it's sort of in the, I guess, sort of the floor. I guess it's. So basically, simple building. If you drive there, you see the building, it has this bar light structure. And the roof, solar panels. The north face of, faces towards Carter was gonna have a, we left the other base side. So my understanding is that, for our special winner, it has just this, this is about 14 inch ladder. So I'd like to see the, for having signage of that size there. Most of our trash and goose will be kind of on the side of the building. So that's actually, almost not visible from the streets. We're just saying our signage page. So this is what we're looking to do there. And then sort of the street signage. So this is, this is about 10 square feet, which I think is close to the minimum. But they would like permission to do those sorts of signs, you see, from farm markets if you can develop. So seasonally changeable. I don't know, maybe it's the buildings. Just some general information about the hours. And this is kind of what they're looking to only burn that house or going down the street. Very small, so you can sort of see like there's a, now that line's pretty hard, but you start to see the house. But you can probably see the urn at. So as you're approaching, you can sort of see that, and then you start to see the street sign. Then we're starting, so we don't want people to sort of say, oh, suddenly, oh, that has a market in Detroit. This is, from the other direction from the east. Again, you're looking across a field, but I think from the first point, it was about 150 feet, and then it's just getting closer. Yeah, so that's just an overview included. There's a traffic count in this material, or traffic company, necessary for vehicles without bleeding fire apparatus. So that analysis, all that, so that's required.
Any thoughts?
General thought is, you know, the site, I'm a residential building, it's a.
I think I'd rather see a ground mounted sign rather than something on the.
I see. Yeah.
Yeah.
There are rules, and there are also exceptions to rules. You know, I mean, the interesting thing is, is like, here's a business, it's not the really.
Yeah.
Right, two, right, right, right. So, you know, what can it do to?
If this?
Be it on the, I'd rather see a ground mounted sign.
And that's their house, obviously.
It's a house that, I mean, it's, it's under their ownership, master. They want to, we need you residential, they just want this building. Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't know, so this, you know, it's something that you would say is a thought, of moving in visibility and sort of think about what, what would be. And we came with a sign, we got a larger sign in the building. I think that is peaceful and.
Signs hopefully they're set, I don't know too.
Yes.
They're not gonna stay.
No. Exactly, just about.
I don't know the elevations of, of septic there.
There, I mean, the road is a little, you know, and then there's a bit of a drop off. So we need that to do the system.
So the site book, any of the site book, when is that gonna take place?
Well, whatever. If, if we can do it before the ground freezes, that would be great, or it'll happen in spring. But you're in timeline.
And what about the septic, so someone's up, this leads you.
Yeah, so that would be, you know, either we, we could either schedule it for December or, depending on finances, wait till spring. Getting pretty tight at this point, I think.
So, Ken, this is one of those plans where there's not a lot of input from us. So, why don't we put this on the agenda for our next meeting? If you want to fold.
And in the meantime, I'll take a right now and just look at the house and, yeah. Where that house is based. And where the traffic is, you don't want people thinking this. I'm all, I think around, I would really like to see a ground mounted sign. There's this, on the residential. Look if you can. Take a look.
The only thing that my interest spread out of that was their park. They have very minimal spots, I think. They have quite a few events, yeah. Maybe that blow over 100, but I don't know. I think the seam on the pole, this stretch from here, up here is very, very dangerous. That's my, that's my initial box on my side. I don't think they have an apartment.
Are they, you like the other, the other farm, the other barn for events also? Were there, are they, their intention there is to really turn that fully into production area? Because right now, that makes a production, it's not comfortable. I mean, the day to day, I mean, I guess in terms of, of the coach, you know, there's what serves the market, what is required for the market, and that was special events. If that's kind of a separate discussion, and if that's something that you know, wasn't very forward. We think very forward. I know it's a separate discussion, but I think that they need to also, they want their, what their plans are, especially if there's a, we, I don't know. Well, um. Right, so would that, my question is, would that be under your perking now, so this is, this is planning board review? Because it's, it's not clear, do you think it's not a special? I mean, so I've been, as you probably know, I've been, you know, excited about what was needed from us. But I have been very constantly engaged with the inspector. I mean, having spaces in there. So it's 25. So we're about, we need four of the areas, you know, in terms of hard parking. It's too unscripted for the area of buildings, so. Are they trying to do something similar to like, mission series with that? Which is, we're not.
See that? This is our apartment.
Oh, that's parking. Okay, I didn't see that.
So it's all parking. This is parking.
Yeah.
So that's 1350.
All right. The other ones there, okay. I think that makes it better. They might want to consider demoing. I know it's rough, but okay.
Trying to do with the can.
Yeah. Yep.
I mean, you know, they could have like, lawnmower to run here for. They also, they also want.
Yeah, there's, so when they do their events, either way, on a panel, when they do their events, they've been using one of the fields down the street and driving them on, hey, I don't know. They've got more property over in here.
Yeah.
For the events, for, for, I guess, having 25 parking spaces. But how did you calculate that?
So that's based on the area calculation of the business. So it's either 100 square foot for the actual retail area, which is just that, or because this is mostly kind of back of the house, it's also about 200 square foot for the full building.
Why don't we put this on the, the agenda for the next, the next meeting?
Sure.
Are you meeting in December? Because I may not be here for the, the meeting in December.
It's usually the second and fourth weeks, so that would be, your next board meeting would be the eighth.
All right, well, thank you for, for letting me do an introduction.
We'll go to next meeting. Probably make, there may be a decision, I don't know. I, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be.
Actually, this goes, has to go to public hearing, right?
So it's not gonna go to an official public hearing. We are gonna inform the abutters, so that's why you have the abutters list. Does it need to go in the newspaper? Because we wouldn't make it.
Okay.
Um, it's just, we're gonna inform the abutters. We're gonna share this internally with department staff for their comments, and presumably they'll have those comments in prior to the meeting on the eighth.
Great. Wait, thank you. Yep, okay, good. We also, we'd like to pay our fees, we're not sure.
We're not either. We're gonna have to calculate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, a question starts off, and I'm not quite sure how this works, because Inspector Quinlan said, I guess that I asked you, we can proceed, continue construction, I guess, at this. That's a you.
Yeah, I don't think the planning board would necessarily make any determination.
That's a you thing. We can say, what? All right.
Do we have anything else?
I think things can wait. I think what I'll update the board with is I'm gonna have my first meeting, once I schedule it, with the zoning vial update committee.
Thank you.
Good night. And, you know, report back on that if you're, likely your January meeting. I don't think it's gonna happen next. I will have for your next meeting. I don't think it's gonna happen next. I will have for your next meeting, the final version of the zoning report. I'm finishing that. And with regards to how some of the board last, last time met, my colleague who was gonna take place, take my place, there was a resignation in the department. So I'm still here. So I'll continue to be working with the board.
Was it, was it him that resigned?
No, it was, it wasn't him that resigned, but I need to make him go elsewhere. And it was still new. So it was one of those things where I was like, let me get you acquainted with, with Granby. No, rather, no, you just go to the other communities.
So they still suck with you.
They're still sucking me. But I appreciate that I get to, because it makes it easier for me, not having to do the other work that the other planner was doing. But, yeah, so December will be, you know, quite busy, I think, with the one meeting. I'm presuming the board does not want to meet on December 22. Okay. And then looking at January, the second and fourth weeks, as we typically do, we'll likely have that there. Kathy did mention to me, because I, I met with Kathy prior to the meeting this, today, just because I got back from vacation last week, and just trying to make sure that we have everything that we need for Granby. There are three site plan approvals that are supposed to be joint meetings with the zoning board of appeals, which are for oversized garages. I'm not quite sure where they are with regards to scheduling those special meetings, or those, because they're public hearings, it's a special permit for them. And the planning board in the past has had joint meetings. So my question to the planning board is, do you need to have a joint meeting? Can you just meet and just, we'll have separate meetings?
So it's, it's like what comes first?
Sure.
They don't want to approve a zoning unless the site plan's been approved.
Or vice versa.
But if you have a joint meeting, at least it gets done for the homeowner and they can proceed.
So I think that one of the challenges with regards to that, obviously, as the board knows, site plan is, doesn't really have the requirements that a public hearing requires, or a special permit requires. I don't know where they are in the timeline, but they're pretty near to the 65 days that they need to be opening the public hearing. So it's one of those things where, sure, we can get the planning board, presume, hopefully you'd get three members there if it is a joint meeting. Or I let, but, and I couldn't let the zoning board know that we were meeting in December, because you need to do the public notice for the public.
So we do not need public. Okay, so why don't we just bring those three items to our next meeting, so we can take care of the site plan?
Are you fine with that? I mean, I can, I can work with Kathy and the applicant to at least get you in front of, get them in front of you for that December meeting.
So, so it's a ZBA thing, but because it exceeds the 1,200 square feet, it's a special permit from the planning board?
It's a, it's a special permit, no, the, the special permit is granted according to your scheduled uses. The special permit is granted by the ZBA with the planning board granting the site plan. So private garages or stables exceeding 1,200 feet in area in the RS zone requires a special permit from the ZBA and a spot site plan approval from the planning board.
Okay, so we could do that.
So I will let Kathy know that we'll set up those notices too, for that meeting. And we'll just bam bam bam. We'll have four, four, four special, four site plan approvals.
What size buildings are we talking about?
That I, I don't know. Yeah, this is just the mention that she's having a hard time trying to schedule the public hearings with the zoning board. So, yeah.
All right, I'll put in a motion to adjourn.
Yes. With the November 24th, planning 40 days.
I will second. Any further discussion?
It's 44.
All in favor? Aye.